In the Commissioner's courtroom of the County Administration Building, two hundred, South Texas Avenue, Suite one oh six, Bryan, Texas, seven seven eight oh three. The first item of business is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The US and Texas flag. Chaplain G. H. Jones is not with us today, so I will give the prayer and lead the pledge. Let us bow.
Father God, we do thank you this morning for all your blessings. We thank you for this day and for the opportunities that you have afforded us. We pray a very special blessing on all of the Brasis County families, the law enforcement officers protecting us, those that are serving us. As we try to know that you will continue to guide the membership of Brasis County with patience, with courage, and strength. That we will make good decisions that we will act in according to the demands that you have given us, be glorified in all that you do, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state, under God, one individual.
Our second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and/or concerns. Hearing none, we will move from that to item three. And we are considering and taking actions on Agenda Items Three through twenty-seven. Item three is appointment of Phyllis B. James to the Local Workforce Development Board representing adult, basic, and continuing education. Term of appointment is ten one, two thousand sixteen, through nine thirty, two thousand nineteen. It, a motion has been made. And second, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I call for the vote. All in favor, please say yea.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Having none opposed, the motion passes. Item four, designation of the day of the week and location for Commissioner's Court to convene into regular session each week during fiscal year two thousand seventeen.
You gotta say what day.
I, I will, I will. Thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna read that. The Brasis County, or pardon me, designation of day of the week and the location for the Commissioner's Court to convene in regular session each week during fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. The Brasis County Commissioner's Court will convene in regular session each Tuesday morning at ten AM in the Commissioner's courtroom of the County Administration Building, two hundredth South Texas Avenue, Suite one oh six, Bryan, Texas. And it has been moved in second. All in favor?
It has been moved in second. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Any? No opposed? No discussion? Thank you. It has passed. Item five, proposed county holidays for two thousand seventeen calendar year. And I will read those. Monday, um, second of January, two thousand seventeen, New Year's Day. Monday, sixteenth January, two thousand seventeen, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Friday, April fourteenth, Good Friday. Monday, twenty-ninth of May, two thousand and seventeen, Memorial Day. Tuesday, July fourth, Independence Day. Monday, fourth of September, Labor Day. Thursday and Friday, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of November, two thousand seventeen, Thanksgiving Day. Monday and Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, I apologize, December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen, Christmas, and one day floating holiday. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Uh, um, any discussion? Well, uh, that's, that's, uh, probably, yeah, we'll discuss that next year, okay? Yeah? Well, celebrate with us on Martin Luther King's Day. All right. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Uh, passes, and, um, we'll have these posted for the public. Item six, request approval of out-of-state travel for a jail administrator, Wayne Dickey, to speak at the National Association for Civil Oversight of Law Enforcement Conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico, September twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. Okay. Hearing none? All in favor? Say.
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Hearing none, uh, the motion passes. Item, item seven, payment authorization in the amount of two hundred sixty dollars to diner's card airfare costs for some witness in the, in a case a purchase order was not obtained in advance.
Second.
Any discussion? It has been moved in second. Um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Item eight, approval of the following job descriptions. A, temporary attendant, building and grounds, um, ten, one thousand forty hours, class code zero eight three two, position fifteen for exposition complex. B, teacher, class code fifteen fifty-seven, position one for sheriff's office, jail inmate commensary.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to ask, give me a brief description of what B is, teacher. Wayne?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, positions in a department that are educators that coordinate the previous education and provide GED classes, English as a second language classes, and intensive college readiness classes to promote education.
Okay, thank you.
And a description should be in our packet. I have one. It's not. It is? Okay. I have a description, but I realize sometimes it's not in the Commissioner's packet. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Number nine, approval of the TCDRS elected rate for two thousand seventeen. Brasis County has elected a rate of fourteen percent. Brasis County also elects to pay an additional one million dollars to the deposit into the Brasis County's account with TCDRS.
Second.
Any discussion? Having moved in second, all in favor of this, um, action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Item ten, request to perform US Army Special Operations Military Training in Brasis County.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Item eleven, approval of the medical and dental premiums for FY two thousand seventeen and the effective dates. Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, is the effective date on here, or do we need to name the effective?
Okay, okay. Any more discussion? Question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Okay. Motion passes. Item twelve, approval of Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal documents for two thousand seventeen.
Move approval.
Commissioner, we did not, we did not receive the twelve ninety-five form for this yet, so we ask if we can table it with HR's permission. Um, we've talked about tabling it till next week. Hopefully, we're able to obtain those by that time.
Okay. Jennifer?
Table it till next week, yes, sir.
Okay. Motion, uh, it has been asked that we table till next mo-, uh, week. Is there a motion to that effect?
Move.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
To table. Thank you. Um, all opposed? None opposed? Motion passes. It will be table until next week. Uh, item thirteen, approval of business associate agreement with, uh, Bethesda Healthcare Incorporated for the Healthy Directions Program. Is there a motion? It has been, uh, a motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll call for the question. All in favor of this action, um, as proposed by the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, motion passes. It's real difficult to do three things at the same time. Uh, fourteen, consider and accept grant from the Texas Bar Association Historical Committee for preservation and restoration for, of the original Brasis County docket books. This grant will include complete restoration of the original docket books that will be retained by Brasis County. In addition, there will be two duplicates created, with one being on display at Baylor and another in Brasis County for public viewing and, and accessibility. Thank you. And I need to note, this will be the Brasis County District Clerk's office, is that correct? Okay. All right. Uh, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Number fifteen, renewal of agreement between City of Bryan and Brasis County for housing, housing City of Bryan prisoners in the Brasis County Detention Center for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen. Motion made. And second, is there any discussion? No discussion? Call for the question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion pass. Number sixteen, request approval of agreement between offender watch and Brasis County for period of October one, two thousand and sixteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Motion is made. And second, all in favor, um, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Next item is item seventeen, approval of the following funding agreement for FY two seventeen. Thank you. Um, uh.
Second.
A through L. Okay. We'll correct that. Thank you. All right. Beats reading all of these. Um, any, you've, you've heard the motion. Do we have any, um, discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none opposed, motion passes. Item eighteen, fourth renewal lease agreement with the Brasis County Emergency Service District One for the purpose of a substation of the Brasis County Sheriff's Office in Southern Brasis County, Texas for fiscal year twenty seventeen. It has been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of the action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nineteen, renewal of contract seventeen dash oh eight oh R for lane striping and pavement markers with inline traffic maintenance.
Move approval. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? You've heard the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. None opposed? Motion passes. Um, item twenty, approval of contract seventeen hyphen two oh seven Verizon Wireless Customer Agreement for County Sailor and Data Plan Service, services through DIR Contract number DIRTSO three four one five. You've heard the motion, and is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we call for the question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? We will, um, declare the motion passing. Next item is item twenty-one. Um, final plat of access pipe and tube, lot one, block one, one eighty-two point seven three one acres, L. McLaughlin Survey, A. thirty-eight, Bryan, ETJ, Brasis County, Texas. Site is located in Precinct Four, and I move to approve.
Second.
You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we call for the question. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Motion pass. Item twenty-two, tax refund applications for the following.
Second.
Thank you. Hearing, uh, motion made. Any discussion? Question? All in favor of the motion passing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Item twenty-three, budget amendment. Budget amendment, item, uh, number fifteen slash sixteen five one, that's fifty-one point one through fifty-one point four.
Move approval.
Second.
All in, um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Hearing none opposed, motion passes. Next item is twenty-four personnel changes of status.
Move approval. Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. Motion passes. Payment of claims, number twenty-five, payment of claims, claim number seven one four eight three zero six through claim number seven one four eight five four nine.
Move approval. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like sign. None opposed? Motion passes. And the next item of business, we will skip, uh, item twenty-six and twenty-seven and move to the acknowledgement of the following contracts that have been renewed and approved by the Community Supervision Corrections Department. A, the Counseling Center. B, Recovery Healthcare Corporation. C, Roy R. Lupence, PhD? D, Pam Perlets. Uh, E is the Brasis Valley Health and Wellness LLC. Sheriff's Department, uh, report on our inmate population, item twenty-nine.
Good morning, acting judge and commissioners. Uh, we have, in the last twenty-four hours, our keep was six hundred and thirty inmates in our custody. Uh, we have twenty-seven that are on home confinement with ankle monitor and five are canteen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. I'm the judge, right? Well, uh, this morning, we'll ask, uh, item thirty is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics. Do we have any? I have a few, if no one has any. Uh, this Friday, we are asking, uh, the public to, uh, join us at the Research Valley and Partnership, that's September the twenty-third, uh, for a presentation on keeping pace in Texas. This is, um, a presentation open to the public on, um, saving energy and saving money. Uh, we hope that, uh, the Commissioner's Court members will attend, and on next Tuesday, we will have a workshop here on the same topic. So if you can't make it Friday, we will have the same topic in a workshop here after Commissioner's Court. So we're asking that you please plan to attend. On tomorrow, the Brasis Valley Veterans Memorial Board, Memorial Park Board will be dedicating the Buffalo Soldier statue, uh, at the Indian Wars, uh, area, and, uh, it starts at six. Public is invited, and we'd like to encourage everyone to come, six PM. Do we have any other announcements, or special interests, or possible future agenda topics? We will call for item thirty-one, citizens' input and concerns.
I just wanted to call the, uh, important issue to the, uh, upcoming, uh, Bryan Festival of Texas Reds, and also to the, uh, the great stuff, uh, that they have there, and to, uh, for celebrity, uh, took the liberty, signed the Commissioner's Court up.
Well, thank you a lot. I've already done that several times in a row, so I'm gonna pass this time. I'll let you take my place, okay?
You're gonna be in the lead on this?
Since he volunteered, you guys. All right. Hearing none other, we will convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code five one, fi-, uh, uh, five five one, five fifty-one point oh seven eight five for deliberation involving medical or psychiatric records to the, uh, of a county employee, and it's, no, it's not my records today. Um, so, we will ask HR, our legal, Candy, and the Commissioner's Court to join us, um, in executive session.
Yeah, we need to know the time.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Ten twenty-nine.
The time is ten twenty-nine? Thank you. All right. I'm here, you to come with us, legal.
Yes.
Yes.
Twelve, was it ten forty?
Forty-one.
Ten forty-one.
We will reconvene from, um, the executive session and reconvene into our regular...
I move.
We have first noted times for the record.
Okay, and our regular Commissioners Court meeting, continuing with the... Item twenty-eight, the time is ten forty-one A.M.
I think it's twenty-seven. Item number twenty-seven.
Item.
Actually, it's item twenty-six.
No, we went into there, it was twenty-six, twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-seven is the, okay, I will be correct, I will stand corrected. Uh, and we will take action on twenty-seven, consider, uh, any action from our executive session, thank you.
You move what?
That we, uh, accept, make the, um, the motion to approve.
Approval of procedure.
Of the procedure for a specific employee.
Of the certain procedure for the employee.
There's a second.
Second.
It has been moved and second, is there a discussion, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we call for the question, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Hearing non-opposed, the motion pass.